All right. All right, I'm gonna call the village board meeting of trustees for December nineteenth to order. Roll call, please.
Trustee Hartman, trustee Brad.
Here.
Trustee Brown.
Here.
Trustee Brooklyn.
Here.
Trustee Paul Mochky.
Here.
Trustee Calvater.
Here.
President Langfellow.
Here. Please stand for a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance due to play of United States of America. Due to the vow of the Federation stands for our nation and our country. Indelible, with the good beginning of the Constitution.
Hey, we're at a public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone to address the village board on any issue. Please observe the time limit of three minutes while the village board encourages input from residents. It may not discuss or act on any issue that is not duly noticed on the agenda. We have anybody that would like to speak? About J D on the. Okay. Go to ceremonial matters. We have two long-term employees retiring. We have Officer Scott. He's been up for thirty-three years. He's not able to make it tonight. He's on a call in Madison, I believe. Okay. The other is Lisa. And from the police department, and she is on the computer online with us, so. What I'd like to do is, we'd like to recognize her, and Brian will read the recognition that was in your package, just so it's. Other people can hear it, and it's recorded. And the chief, would you like to say something, or?
Um, well, first of all, I want to thank you guys for taking the time to do this. I know that. You don't have your son. Um, first of all, I want to thank you guys for doing this, because it's really, really important that we recognize our employees. And these two employees particularly are going to be sorely missed. They are going to leave a huge void in our department. We have an officer with thirty, almost thirty-four years of experience, he had thirty-four years in March. And then twenty-eight years of experience with Lisa, so it's tremendous amount of experience and longevity, and. Any of you who've been in this, any kind of job, working anywhere thirty years, you know, a long, long time. So I do want to recognize them, and I'm really glad that Brian took the time to put together these resolutions and get some recognition, so take that moment. We do have some more recognition for them through the Public Safety Committee. We're gonna do a little recognition there. And we're also gonna be celebrating them. Officer Scott Pratt has elected to go ahead with a, we're gonna do a retirement party instead of four. January seventh, from one to four, you are all invited. We're gonna host that at the. Fire Department is gonna be gracious to us, borrow their venue, so that's where it'll be. Lisa wanted a little, something a little more low-key, so we will be having a pizza party for her the day before her last day, which would be January twelfth. We'll probably do something here, just launch some pizza. Again, you're all welcome to attend if you'd like. So. I can't say enough about both of them. They've been, they made my job really, really a lot easier and accommodating when I took over as chief, so it's been very helpful.
All right. Brian, I want to just read Lisa's.
Sure.
Report.
A resolution to honor and commend administrative assistant Lisa Davis of the Cross Plains Police Department on the occasion of her retirement. Whereas it is appropriate that this village board should honor those citizens who have performed with uncommon devotion and enthusiasm throughout their careers in law enforcement. And whereas Mrs. Davis of the Cross Plains Police Department is one such esteemable person who has devoted her life to the tenants of law and order and the protection of her fellow citizens. And whereas Mrs. Davis commenced her career with the Village of Cross Plains in nineteen ninety-four. Whereas Mrs. Davis diligently served the village police department by handling a majority of administrative duties for the entire police team. Encompassing budgeting, scheduling, report database management, and I T needs. Whereas Mrs. Davis has resided in the Cross Plains area and has diligently served the residents of Cross Plains honorably as administrative assistant. And whereas Mrs. Davis exemplifies the values of hard work, compassion, and devotion to community that are characteristic of all Cross Plains Police Department staff. And whereas throughout her career, Mrs. Davis demonstrated the utmost professionalism, ability, and work ethic. Helping contribute to the successful operations of both the Cross Plains Police Department and the Village Municipal Court. Now therefore, be it resolved by the village board of Cross Plains that the village. Police Administrative Assistant Davis be honored and commended for her twenty-eight years of dedicated service to the Cross Plains Police Department upon the occasion of her retirement. We extend to her our best wishes for success in all of her future endeavors.
All right, Lisa, would you like to say anything?
Do you have to ask her to unmute to unmute? I assume not anyone can just unmute.
All right, well anyways, if you can hear us, Lisa, I'm hoping you heard that. I certainly. Want to say as village president and as a resident, thank you for your service, and I wish you the only best in your retirement.
I second that, Lisa. Thank you for all the years and all your dedication.
All right, we're good? Alrighty. Thank you, chief. Consent agenda, upon request of any trustee, any item may be removed. From the consent agenda for separate, for separate consideration under general business. Does anybody have anything that they would like removed?
I don't have something on remove, just a question. Both the minutes from October meeting and the November meeting, did we just miss doing October one in November?
The last village board meeting, we had the date of October shown when the November, or excuse me, the prior months was erroneously written.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, I have a motion, and it's, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, same, so move. Report of officers, I just have two items. One, we had another special EMS meeting. Last week, I believe it was, and we ended up deciding to hire a fourth full-time A E M T. It will not add anything to our budget. They had over a thousand hours of overtime, so with. Another person, that should drop way down, and then it's anywhere from ninety to a hundred and ten thousand will have. Surplus from this year's budget, so it should cover it for twenty twenty-three. And then the second is. I'm going to, starting in January, we're basically gonna start looking at the twenty twenty-four budget. It's early. Bobby and I are gonna, every meeting, we're gonna put on parts of the budget. Right now, you guys get an end product in August, September. I think there's a lot of value in seeing the work that we do up until that, behind the scenes, so we're gonna kind of do it as a group. I think that'll give everybody a much better understanding of all the components and parts to it. Plus, it'll certainly have total transparency, because we'll be doing it in an open session, so everybody will know. So. Bobby and I will be setting it up, but we'll have it planned out. We're not gonna make you budget experts or accountants or anything like that, but. I think it's important for everybody to understand behind the scenes work that's going down, and we can do it all together, and that way, I think. It'll be helpful for when we get into the actual talk. That's all I have. Vice President?
Do you want to start that already before April, before the election, just in case?
Yeah, I'm starting in January.
Oh, okay.
Because you only, and I'm gonna, right now, there's, my understanding, correct me, there's only three people running for trustee and myself for village president. Now, people could fold papers and go again, but that's what it was, at least on Friday. So I will invite Sarah, because she's one of the other ones. I don't know, has she turned in her papers? Okay. So she is, so we'll just see, but I'll invite whoever's gonna be to come to at least that part, and we'll try to put it at the top of the agenda.
No, I have nothing.
All right, other trustees.
Done. Couple of quick things. I want to echo the praise of Lisa and her services. Really, the behind-the-scenes work she has done is not extremely valuable to our village and the police department. Definitely want to thank public works and staff for the snow removal, Christmas lights, and rec programs that are going on. And then I want to thank Judd Non for the proposed wellness center investment across.
Okay. Anybody else? Cody?
Quickly, I, again, appreciation of Lisa and all of her hard work for the village. For parks and rec, the pool feasibility subgroup. We're going to be hosting a visioning session at the library, January twelfth, at seven o'clock P M. I'd really like it if some other trustees could show up to that, just to kind of show the people across things that were behind us. It's just gonna take some light work to get there.
Can we make sure we put that on the website, then, or is Mike gonna do that?
It's already been out on social media. I figured I'd mention it to you guys.
No, I appreciate that.
And then also, last night, there was a big fire in town. I would like anyone that can to go and check out the GoFundMe and try and raise some money for the village residents that were affected by the fire. Kudos to the police department and all the first responders who are getting there, limiting the damage to what they were able to. That's it.
Would we do a drop-off class series for them, if people don't do GoFundMe pages, or is there another thing to do?
Not that I've seen. There's one, one woman on Facebook, I believe, was like across the street neighborhood, so I kind of fielded some questions and.
Space and, and yeah, GoFundMe is known very, very well, it's our end use ball.
Oh, wow.
A lot of people are. It was around six thousand, around one o'clock this afternoon, so.
I said, last night I checked, it was over eight.
Oh, that's terrible.
Alrighty. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Michael.
I would just like to thank Lisa and Scott for their years of work on the police department.
All right. All right, we'll go to village administrator.
No updates at this time.
All right, thank you. Any other reports? I don't think so. All right, we'll go to general business. Discussion and possible action, forming a community development authority, U S D A R D loan. And we have a guest, and I'll let Brian introduce him.
Sure, thanks, Jay. I've been in contact with Mr. Cannon, and we've been talking a little bit and learning a little bit more about the U S D A. Rural Development Loan is a potential funding source for our upcoming Village Hall Police Station project. Mr. Cannon had done a number of these different projects throughout his career. He currently is the Community Development Authority Chair for the city of Baraboo, and previously served as the city administrator for Sun Prairie for seventeen years. So he's done a number of projects under this loan program. And like I said, since I was doing a little bit of research on it, I thought he'd be an expert to have in and discuss a little bit more about some of the ins and outs of what we might need to know, if this is something we would like to utilize, so. I will turn the floor over to Mr. Cannon, and thank you so much for coming out tonight.
Actually, less than fifty miles from Combs, I can't be an expert. Like Brian said, I've got twenty-three years in local government experience. There are a couple of city halls, got the libraries in Baraboo, we did the city hall. Three years ago, using the U S D A program, we're now in the middle of doing a library remodel and reconstruction using the U S D A program. And then we're also building two fire stations with the U S D A program. So. It just keeps pushing back my old tires. Little bit about what a community development authority is. I also, I've been in Baraboo for eleven years. I also ran the Community Development Authority in Whitewater for six years. At the same time, both part-time positions. Under state statute, it is a separate body politic. Which, I'm not an attorney, so I don't really know what that means. That's what state statute says. It's seven members, including two elected officials. One would be your village president, or their visiting meeting, and another village trustee. And then five members who are residents within the city, who actually have to have a background in real estate, banking, business, along that lines. It actually spells that out under the state statute. The C D A can actually, you know, as the separate body politic, can actually own property. Under their name, and they can actually borrow money. Under their name, which is why the U S D A program really works out well. My recommendation would be is you work with your village attorney to help set this up. It's just a couple of resolutions, I believe, is all it takes to establish your community development authority, and then you rename the numbers from the beginning. Are you familiar with debt, general obligation debts? They're limited to five percent of your equalized value, and the village can only borrow that money for up to a twenty-year limit. And you are basically, it's irrevocable debt, so once you establish that debt, the next village board can't undo it. You're, you're basically are tied to that for the next one year to pay that off, unless you default. The C D A can actually go for forty years. And that's what the nice part is. There, there's not, their debt is not considered to be a general obligation debt, so they don't have the ability to raise taxes. What we do is, we have a lease. Way we set it up in Baraboo is, the C D A actually owns the building and the property, and we own the roundabout too, because that was part of the project, so. And then we lease it back to the city. In that case, they pay their lease payments to me every year. We set it up so that they, they consider it to be debt. So it goes against the debt limits, as opposed to going against the, their operating funds with all the requirements that you have. It is a fixed rate loan. Ours, I think it's three point two-five percent right now, or three point seven-five percent, I don't remember exactly. And that is fixed for forty years. Which, you're not gonna get a local bank, or any bank, to do it for forty years. You might get three years or five years. And one of the requirements for U S D A is you have to have two local bankings to say, this is the best we can do for you. And, but no one's gonna meet the forty years. If you're letting them know, we could go down and do that. So it's, it's pretty good, and it's basically, you pay the interest twice a year, and you pay the principal once a year. Once you get U S D A approval, there's a lot of steps involved. The C D A will need to own the property. So if you've already had a site, you'll need to, if you've already determined where you want to put it, you'll need to transfer that into the C D A's name. You have to do a light determination, which is just a legal step back and forth, so the C D A can borrow money. We use Cora and Brady out of Milwaukee. They walk me through that or return. It's, they're a great firm to work with. The nice part about this, doing this, is you don't have to use data's bacon wages, which saves you about, probably about eight, eight to ten percent off the, off the cost of the construction. We did a project. Two years ago, and it cost us about, a million-dollar project, cost us an extra eighty thousand dollars, because we had used data to fix it. There is a lot of paperwork involved. Welcome to the federal government. I have, the way I set mine up is I were former for everything they asked for. And they have all sorts of different forms. They're not really that difficult, and it just becomes time-consuming. One of the things you'll need to do is a, a financial forecast, which you have to show. For the C D A, they'll look through the C D A to the city to make sure that you can legally, or not legally, that you can financially pay the debt, however you want to do that. And go from there. And once you get the C D, or excuse me, U S D A Rural Developments approval. You then go out and get an architect, or you can actually do all the parallel at the same time. My recommendation would be several steps can be done at the same time. You can start setting up your C D A, start contacting U S D A. And then you might want to do an R F P for an architect. To give them that know-on-a-new, probably a space needs study first, and then come through, and if you need an R F P or. An architect, let me know, and I'll send you the one we used. It's change the names, send it along. And that's really it. You don't need to do a short-term loan, because you don't close on this. So basically, you have a construction loan. We did a revenue by anticipation note for the city hall up in Baraboo. And we did it for three years, and capitalized the inverse of the admin payments, and then paid it off. For the library and for the two fire stations, we did a line of credit with the local banks. Banks are required to do a C R A, which is the Reinvestment Act, to get points. They were very happy that we were able to do this. The line of credit's a little different than the homeowner's line of credit. You basically, you borrowed five million dollars on a line of credit. You have to take out fifty thousand and one dollar on day one, and then you take a draw, and once you pay against that. You, you've lost that ability. It's not like you're holding where you can pay it down, pay it back, or you can re-borrow it. And so basically, it's just a loan. But you're gonna take draws on it, and it's, it works out really well, because you're not paying any interest, if you're not using it. So that helps quite a bit. U S D A will be. Quite a bit involved in the project. They'll, we have architectural review, they'll want to come to the meetings, they'll want to do everything. And I, I can only say that they've been a joy to work with. The first time I got it, I got twenty different forms I had to fill out. Everyone was numbered, and the form was attached to it, and I'm like, this is a piece of cake. So they're, they're very easy to work with. I would certainly recommend them. And I can, you know, I've already talked to them about you guys were interested in doing this, you know, they, they know you're out there. And then, once you get going, it's just a matter of time. You know, the building and.
A question for you. Does the authority have to stay intact for the full forty years?
No, there are prepayment penalties. Your expense are prepayment.
Well, no, I was just wondering if, if, once everything, the loan is, everything's set up. Does the authority have to stay there for not doing another project? Do they have to stay for the length of the loan?
Yes, you don't need to keep that. And the, the loan is between U S D A and the County Development Authority.
Yeah.
And then you have a lease agreement to that, so yeah, you would have to keep the C D A intact. Now, you don't have to keep those original seven numbers for forty years, but.
Yeah. Hey, go ahead, Judy.
Okay, but onto that. You can, you don't have to, you can prepay your loan. You can prepay it without anything. Okay. That was one question. The other question was. Okay, was it, oh, when you said it's a lot of paperwork, who does that paperwork? Brian? Is that what you, or our group, does our group would do that?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I did it in Baraboo. We did not use this. We just did straight construction work in Sun Prairie, we don't have buildings down there. But I did all the paperwork in Baraboo, the financing side, because of the Community Development Authority. It does take a lot of work, building a building does take a lot of time, it'll take a lot of this time. I would put together, I think you were looking at, you know, police and city hall together. You want to, we call it the P M T, Project Management Team, where we've had the department heads, and then work on it together, and, and take our time in planning. You know. You get one shot at doing this, you know. I, I joke, with the first building, we, we did, all the architects came in at the same rate. I had one architect walk in and said, I want to build a new building for fifty years. Nobody else ever talked about the longevity of the building. And he had the job. So you're gonna build this, you're gonna build it once, you might want to look at expansion. Think what you need down the future, you know, to build the building, you know, we put structural steel in, put a story on the city hall in Sun Prairie. Whether they do it or not, probably not, but the cost was marginal to do that. We had a building, another building on the west side. Which we moved the police department over there, and put police and fire in the N S out of that building, so we have two stations. Or they have two stations. But we're doing the same thing in Baraboo with two fire stations, a bigger one and a smaller one, so. You know, it takes a lot of planning, where you think your goal's gonna be, and, and knowing that you want to do this for a whole period of time.
And the only other question, I was kind of confused. So we're, the fixed rate, somewhere in between three and a quarter, three, seven, five, or forty years. But then, when you mentioned the vein, so the vein comes in during the construction, and then the other is termed out?
Yeah.
How so? So the vein comes in for the construction period, and then when it's final, is when we go to them, and we get the forty-year fixed rate?
Correct.
Okay, perfect.
It's like your construction loan.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The nice part is, is, you know, you'll lock in with U S D A and. Fill out one form, and it says, you're fixing it at this rate, but if they lower the rates, you get to go to a lower rate.
Oh, wow.
So, yeah, that was an easy one to think about.
The basics down to that.
Yeah, so, yeah. But it worked out, you know, it's, it worked out really well. So, I mean, there's, there's a lot of work to be done in building a building. You know, done, you city halls, couple of libraries. It's, there's a lot of planning involved. But it's, it's fun, it's, it's really fun.
All right, Mike, call them then, Cameron.
I have two, two quick questions for you. Is the C D A, is it taxed? As you said, they own it, so.
Yes.
They're not paying tax. That was question one. Two, so then when it ends, the C D A, what gives the building to the?
That's part of what you're.
That part of what's.
Yeah, it's that, I'm not a transaction at the end, so.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not gonna be there.
Right.
Well, yeah, I can be there when they close in forty years, and you know, retire, and I said, I won't pay nothing.
Thank you, I was just curious.
Yeah.
Operated.
It's, it's taxes, yeah.
So, I, I think I partially answered my question, but the reason that you put it in the, the C D A owns it in the municipality leases, it's so you get a forty-year loan, it's a twenty-year loan? Correct. That's right. And then what, I guess, powers does the C D A have? Like, why else do they exist? You get the building up, and then.
They can do a lot of community development things. In Baraboo, we actually own a hundred and ten housing units. For low-to-moderate incomes, they're hedge-funded. That's another part of my responsibility, is to manage those. So really, the C D A up there, which created the new, the housing units, kind of a housing authority, and so we're looking to, to do that. And but like, I came to that job with a lot of background in construction, in building the buildings, so they kind of added my role too.
Okay. And then. What happens if you can't find the five extra community members? Like, I think definitely could now, but you know, I don't know what the world's gonna look like in twenty years, if this group still has to exist. And you can't find the business-minded community members who want to join in, what, how do you, how do you do that?
I think that it's limited to seven members. But you can't go above. I don't know if you can go below. Yeah, I'm not an attorney, so you're, you're the village attorney, we have lawyers for that question for you.
Okay.
Bobby?
So I believe you said that the lease payment is, what it like, own is our level limit, that you consider the debt payment, so you kind of.
The way we set it up in Baraboo was in December, because we already know what the rates are gonna be, or what the, the dollar now is, and it's, you know, it's basically like a car payment every year. It's always the same amount. They'll borrow that money in December, and they'll levy that as part of the debt in December. And then collect it in January of the next year, and then. They pay twice a year, the day of February, and September.
Anybody else have any questions?
So, you said you were doing multiple proj, you've done multiple projects with the C D A, so this loan could be. We're doing like a village hall, and then other thing comes up with EMS or something like that, where these funds would still be available through that?
Yeah.
Okay.
It'd be, it'd be separate loans.
Correct.
Yeah, because we have a loan for the city hall up there, we'll have a loan for the fire, two fires, well, we're gonna do one loan for the two fire stations, and then we have one for the library.
So they're all, they're all separate, these separate loans?
Yeah. You will need to set up a separate checking account for the C D A for this project, and you'll need to keep your funds segregated. And you'll need to show, bank statements every month. They just, you know, fax them over, or email them over to U S D A. They'll want to see the bills, they'll also approve the bills before you make the payment. They'll want to see the bills. They'll also approve the bills before you make the payments. Uh, but I, you know, in our case, you know, right now, it's pretty simple. You have the architect, we have the general contractor. And that's about it. Once you get into the furniture, it's a little bit more. Um, but like I said, they're really easy to work with. They'll help supply you with the documents you need, that type of stuff.
Rudy?
Sorry, someone. Did you say, um, do we have to have three bins though? Is there a limit of how many bins that we gotta have all of her? That was just too big. You did say two banks that you say.
That is, yeah, that's not, um, that you you need to contact. Who will give you their best rate, uh, what they can do for you. And then USDA will say. Their program is better than what the village can get, therefore you should be eligible for that program.
That sounds too big to you.
Uh, no, it it can become real consuming, time consuming. Um, you know, I'm I'm not an administrator anymore, so I have a lot of time to be able to spend on this and and. I'm probably in the middle of doing these projects, probably eighty percent of my time, but I'm only up there two days a week, so it's. Um, it's it's. It is time consuming, but USDA there are very helpful to work the way to move.
Thank you.
It's, it can be a lot of fun, building a building, uh, picking out colors and design and those types of things. There's a lot of things I recommend you do. Uh, once you get to your architect stage, if you get to that, uh, we've done tours. Where we packed everybody up and then we go around into the, uh, city halls, fire stations, and you know, list of new ones. And what do you, what do you like, what do you don't like? Uh, and then kind of blend those ideas together.
Yeah, we're kind of, we've done that and we have kind of a project team right now and we've done, uh, some space. Uh, needs, so we're, we're probably getting close to trying to, we're trying to find, obviously, the funding is key and then. We're probably looking next year for the architect.
In twenty twenty-three?
Twenty, twenty twenty-four for the architect.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, that'll be in the, go ahead, Corey.
What would you estimate the time for anybody, like, from setting this up and applying to actually having funds available? Like, how much time does that generally take?
Probably three or six months. The nice part is, is once they give you the approval, um, it's locked in for five years. So it's not like you have to start construction next day, um, once you lock in.
But we would need the architect. Part done.
Yeah, you're you're gonna need.
We have the land, but we don't have the architect.
Yeah.
And the cost breakdown, you need a.
Yeah, you'll need a cost breakdown, you know, the preliminary numbers. Uh, the architect will come here and say, you know, you know, two hundred and eighty dollars a square foot, da 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 da. And, you know, then you want to do your FFNE, you know, those types of things. That's the nice part is, you know, we talked about, you know, we're gonna do. Especially for the fire stations, you know, twenty-five million dollars, that some of that's gonna be for. Stuff that doesn't have a forty year life, so we're gonna do what you talked about, basically pay down after the principal. Uh, amortize some of that which endures as opposed to, uh, forty years and pay that equipment down. So that we're not paying for a piece of equipment that we retired from the building.
Right. Corey?
Does this program require any of like the building? I can't remember what it was.
Green leads?
Does it require any of that?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's only in the city of Madison.
I just wanted to make sure.
No, that's a valid, oh, that's a good question.
No, there there is no, and they don't even require a name or spake it, so.
Yeah, that's a big one. All right, well, we certainly appreciate you coming down and I guess the next step is I want everybody to just kind of think about it and we'll put it on a future one to actually discuss it. Because I think twenty twenty-three, we should start getting things set up for twenty twenty-four. Cameron?
I have one more question.
Sure, go ahead.
So we're, well, I guess, what is our official population?
Forty-one hundred.
Forty-one hundred?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, there's like, then that's just from last year's census?
Twenty twenty census, yeah.
Uh, yeah, okay. And so even because. I mean, we gotta be actually close to five thousand, but does that not matter until the next census and?
I I don't know. I keep talking to the wrong.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, Baraboo's twelve thousand, so, um, it's just considered a rule, you know, so you qualify.
Okay, well, I just, we.
There there's a litany of programs they have. I think they do have some programs for under five thousand.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at. It says seventy-five percent, uh, under five thousand, fifty-five percent, under twelve thousand.
But we don't make it because of the, for that, because we talked to someone from USDA. We don't need that because we have too much.
We have household income.
That's it, yeah.
My next question.
Yeah.
I do that, um, but never mind.
Yeah, so we can't get into that. What would be world world?
Yeah, and Baraboo is like fifty-two percent meets the the rules hard, you know, so.
Yeah.
Uh, we qualify very easily. I mean, I will tell you, you know, in the long run, over forty years, you do pay more interest. Uh, it does drive your payments down, you know, I just didn't put. Um, back in the envelope, five million dollars over forty years and three and a quarter, I think it was, two hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah. Very good. We really appreciate you coming. Thank you. Very helpful. Gives us a great start on this. Alrighty. Okay, we're on number two, discussion and possible action. Village Brewery Road Project Piping Bid Contract Award. Brian? Would you please come up? I guess you're gonna be here for the next, uh, three. Yeah.
Uh, first up, Brewery Road. The, uh, project plans are coming along well. We'll be back in January with. We consider final design from one last, uh, review, with you. And then hopefully kick out two dozen bids. The, uh, issue at hand tonight, however, is for the underground items. The village has had a long standing practice of using ductile iron for water main pipe. Very typical industry, under here product. Uh, of late, however, ductile iron is very hard to come by. From the supply chain outcome through the last couple of years. So, um, suppliers have been inviting communities that it's about nine month lead time to get pipe. Whereas it used to be just in stock. So to make sure you can use the pipe that fits your standard and your tool and all those things. Uh, we had recommended pre-purchasing the pipe. Uh, which is a little different than what we've done in the past. Usually you bid a project and the contractor's gonna buy all the stuff and install it. Here, uh, you need to be pre-purchasing both the ductile iron and we'd be recommending a PVC sewer, the plastic sewer. Uh, that's not in short supply at the moment, but you don't have that at the same time as the water piping, it can create some problems. Uh, there are some advantages to this configuration, uh, other than you pipe that you want. Like, you don't pay sales tax is is the big one, where the contractor obligated to pay sales tax. You will save. Save yourself, uh, five and a half percent on on the item. The downside is you gotta take it when they have it. So as the shipment comes in from the factory, they don't have a place to put it at their backyard. They'd like to drop it off, drop ship it right here. Uh, so, uh, Jerry had suggested perhaps the, you know, village hall parcel is gonna be available for the next nine months at least.
Yeah.
Uh, we've addressed that that issue and the rest of it is is pretty typical. We've been doing this actually the last two years. For communities that, uh, use ductile iron and harden it in the last couple of years. So, uh, we went off for bids, uh, just like you with a real project, we're in the paper, uh, and open bids. The low bid. Uh, would be core main. I mean, we'd be recommending both, uh, their base bid and ultimate bid for PVC sewer. Yeah, they're taking the questions.
Michael?
There isn't any issue with storing it at all for nine months or however long.
Yeah, maybe some factor. Uh, Jerry's gonna be running some fence. Yeah, uh, it is, it's not, it's valuable stuff, right?
Yeah.
In case, uh, you are tampering, your PVC is photosensitive, so it's not good, you'd be light if it's been out there for about five years. But, uh, it's in historic times, three years prior to two years ago, it wouldn't be sitting in your garden in Alabama. Until somebody ordered it, so it's six oh one at the, but it should be secured. So as Jerry was gonna get some portable security fence and as the pile grows, make the fence grow. And, uh, take care of it that way. Some of the other items, uh, copper tubing is included in this as well. Uh, brass fittings, those can be stored inside. Those have a lot higher strength value, a lot more potential. Oh, it's a very real thing.
Sure. But Jerry said he definitely has space for the copper and the brass.
Jerry's not here, is he?
No, he's not.
Yeah, he's unable to. All right, I I mean, like, you obviously been working with him, but you know, I don't I don't know if PVC is the right, you might. Feel a little more comfortable if he could say, yeah, that's what we want to do for sewer or whatever.
Oh, sure. Uh, these are based on your s- the standard specs that carry updates and you're. You've always put in PVC for sewer and always put in ductile iron before.
Oh, okay. I thought they thought the whole bid was different because of supply chain. Okay, nevermind.
No, that's like.
Getting it earlier.
Got it.
Yeah.
Got it.
That's like what was installed in all the new neighborhoods.
Yep, yes, okay, right. Okay, I feel better about that.
By doing this, it would put us on, project couldn't be wrapped up by the end of summer.
Yeah, you set your own schedule instead of waiting for the little supplies to come to on it.
And we're saving thirteen thousand dollars by storing it here versus having it in a business slot.
I mean, there's still risk though, right? I mean, it's security fence enough, you know, like, what do you do if it's lost?
Well, these are pretty long pipes. I think they're like, I mean, you're not gonna throw them in the back of your pickup.
Well, no, it's not like four kids are gonna go over and grab a pipe and take off.
Yeah, it actually. Ductile iron comes in eighteen foot lengths. They all take leather, I think that's two tons, almost, whether they're.
Some of the steel.
The copper and the the natural gave under lock, you need the rest of the fence, you know, just to make sure a guy can't remove the four of them.
And a temporary fence is gonna prevent that.
Then we typically see at the destruction site.
Okay.
You know, and.
Yeah, you could pretty well let. Many areas.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna be hard to sneak that.
They gotta bring a, they gotta still bring a semi with a forklift and put it on. I mean.
It's.
Could it happen? Absolutely. But this is not like New York or something where they're you just going down the road so they can use it on the next site. And they they're gonna have to haul the weight somewhere.
Okay, so do you want the, the motion to be for the two sixty-eight or the two sixty-five down below, leave you?
We would recommend, uh, as long as Jerry is comfortable using that site, uh, taking advantage of one percent discount. So the official, uh, our recommendation would be more. Uh, to coordinate for two sixty-five, it's number kind of up, two sixty-five, eight twenty-six and twenty-seven.
Can I make a motion that we go with the court in Maine? Did a two hundred and sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars and twenty cents?
I'll suck it up.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Have we worked with four main before?
Many times, so, yeah, I think we probably still be mostly with pipe in the last.
Okay, all in favor say aye. Aye, all of all say, so move. Number three, discussion and possible action, Pete crossing letter of credit reduction.
Uh, so this is for the subdivision up on the northeast corner of town. Uh, they have. Been working on some of the items that were presented as incomplete to the board about a year ago, up to the today, I think, it was early January. Kind of January last year, this year, eleven months ago. Uh, they've been working on some things this summer. There are still, uh, some things that are not done. But a lot of the things that were done in two thousand twenty-one have now passed their warranty period. So, um, that allows the developer to request the reduction in financial security that is. Financial instrument the village has in case your developer goes belly out, you need to fix that. So, um, the intention of this letter is to just remind. Mostly to remind the developer, but also to make sure the boards are what's still not done, not accepted up in the development. Which, uh, is a lot of grass, uh, work that either came in a little too meaty or a little too spotty. Uh, some of the. Areas of infiltration, cons need to be repaired. Uh, there is an upgrade to the Santeras Sewer Bus Station, that'll services this, uh, development, developers on the floor. Uh, if you added up all of those items, there is an attached punch list that goes into the room in detail on where exactly the. Weeds and piles of garbage are. And, uh, are comfortable recommending. A reduction of sureies to a total of nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Michael, what is the current, you know?
Uh, it's something two point one ninety. Uh, what should be reflected on the entire development?
Right, so what is it at now? Where is that two point one and they're asking you to do it down to one fifty?
They'd ask to move down to as low as the rent is comfortable.
Okay, and this is the number that you're comfortable with?
This is what I mentioned. The, uh, two million dollar figure is what you require to start a construction. Theory, uh, they could have requested a reduction as they build stuff. It's a huge administrative hassle, so a lot of, you know, it doesn't.
Uh, quick other question with the street signs. Are they all falling over or going lopsided?
There's a good number of them that are lopsided. You know, just being impacted by a snowfall or or something, not all of them, but enough of them that Jerry, you know, made this problem.
Oh, he just said have them fix it his way.
Yeah.
Kind of, they need to be straight, is what he said.
Yeah, there's two or three that are just candy wampus or one that's really tall, just kind of weird.
Okay, I saw that. I just figured if they didn't go there, it should.
All right, any other question? Oh, Judy?
I'm not a fan of releasing, because we've been very helping your neighborhood before. We'll figure these too soon. Um, so you think one fifty? I would like to see it higher, honestly. I do feel, I mean, I don't know.
It gets a little tricky. Um. To make it a number that's not based in what is the value of the incomplete items. So what I did just for reference is, is I calculated what I thought the village would have to pay another contractor of duties. And then multiply that at a hundred and twenty-five percent to cover.
So there are some expert in there.
Um, the. Beyond that, a person can certainly. Add two of them, but I recommend, you know, pretty solid basis by which to to do it.
So if like, neighbor A is built already and now neighbor B hadn't built yet, now my neighbor built. B builds, if their grading is incorrect, right, and other, you know, the rain gets going into A. Who's at fault? I mean, are they gonna come back?
No, that's not us. This is only for the public stuff, the public right away, the streets. Uh, the curb and gutter, the signs. This has nothing to do with individual lots.
Right, but different heparin and your development when like Bruce Schuman and the neighbor and.
Yeah.
They'll be back to us and we had a ready to read their letter of credit. That's my memory. So they came back to us and they wanted us to pay.
Yeah, what if the, just what if the neighborhood in general, the way it's designed, doesn't drain correctly is what you should say?
Right, right.
To Judy's point, uh, that is a, is a major issue ahead of the mask for sure. Uh, since that time. Uh, the village has started requiring, did hear thus, to this day, require that finished grades be totally completed. For the development and in survey, which has been done and on file, what are the elevations along all the lot lines? In the subdivision. Uh, that is a requirement of village acceptance. That was actually done last year. So they submitted that survey. To your question, what happens if Brian's builder shows up in twenty twenty-two and Judy's builder shows up in twenty twenty-four and locks it all up? That's between Brian and Judy. Because the building, I said, he had, we had surveyed what it was. It was fine when you showed up, something you, Judy or Ryan did as homeowners and messed it up to your problem. And that's a quite a thing.
Well, yeah, we've been, we've been here for the.
Well, people put in, you know, exposed basements, exposed bases for ingressment, there's an ingressment. So that, that's why you now require full rating of the website. That's how I know. Cameron?
What happened in the the Glacier River neighborhood then? There was, I don't know, I guess you're aware, there was one house that Brittany had to come back and fix a bunch of stuff.
Right. Right, I said that one. Uh they asked for. Permission to not finally grade four of the lots.
Okay, so they didn't they didn't do the survey except that?
And and they asked for permission, they did that, and they were giving permission and and more money was to tell. Uh as they did those, they messed it up. A builder messed it up. Uh and then the village got called at that point. He still had letter of credit. And with all that in fact.
Was just this year or this year?
Okay, so and that's why you held a letter of credit. The village held a letter of credit because we knew those four lots. That was the only thing that was left. Finally rating the most.
And then they, okay, and they asked for permission not to have that survey and shut it off.
And he said, okay, we're gonna keep letter of credit until we're done. That's how that one happened.
Michael?
My question is with that large center lot, the one that's like, you know, whatever. Yeah, that isn't for houses. What's being done with that? Cause that was kinda not flat, I think, when a lot comes out there.
Um that one. The survey that the village requires is just to establish what's happening on the edges of the lots. So the lot lines themselves plus about ten feet in. Property owners are allowed to to build a hole, weight pool if they want, they can build them out if they want. But the lot lines have to stay it's. So in that case, they just ran out of dirt at the time and uh. Some of it's low. So that doesn't impact. The neighbors or the flow along the lot lines. It'll be filled at some point. Um but that is allowed to be either low or high inside the lot, so.
Just now to stop the cup, does it concern you that it's low and not high? Would it be better to be higher rather than low in terms of hydrology and where water is gonna move?
Well, I mean, if if it were my piece of property, I'd rather have it high than low. Uh but there's also some value to it being low. It's a, they don't have to be basement and. Cut all that dirt off somewhere. So it's it's really. Up to whoever the homeowner is. The village is very concerned, should be very concerned. About how water moves along the lot lines themselves. Private private owner wants a. Pond or mountain. But it doesn't impact the neighbors.
Corollary to that, with it being low, we're concerned about the lot lines. Will the lot lines fall into that low area? And then at some point, the lot line will then not be where they are because they've been created into the hole. Like through erosion, et cetera. You see what I'm saying? It's gonna fall inward eventually. This gravity is gonna work its magic.
We. The water will go there. Um the the grass has been pretty well established. We just don't see that type of. Mass distribution, really distribution of of soils over a hundred years. Maybe some discernible movement, but not.
Okay, just a second. Anybody else? Otherwise, could I have a motion, please?
I'm gonna make a motion to approve this because I have a deep minimum amount of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars in financial security.
I will second.
Alright, I have a motion and second. Any more discussion? Go ahead, Cameron.
Just the timeline on it, so the stuff isn't addressed by when. Do we say, okay, well, I guess we're gonna use that one hundred and fifty percent off.
That's a good question.
We really don't generally set it.
They don't?
No.
No, um it it's kind of community standard or the. What are the standards between, you know, if you look at it, America, they're not getting to it in a responsible period of time. Next step, we we raise the wire and say, hey, what's your schedule? And if that was unacceptable, then you can go cash out this.
And you gotta remember, it's costly now because until we accept especially these things, they have to maintain them. Once they get the work done, like the trail and the grass along the trail, then we'll be responsible for mowing it. So. I think there's a financial incentive for them to get. Some of this stuff done. Now, the signs maybe not, but the the reestablishing the grass. You don't wanna keep doing that every year. At some point, you wanna get it done and then turn it over to the village. So they're responsible for it. So I think. That will be the incentive.
Okay, I if if we don't usually do it in, I I guess I was just worried for coming down from two million to a hundred and fifty that they were that were like. They were like, well, that's fine. So then we do that.
Okay, they have a lot of lots to sell, yeah. Huh? And and the two point one, I mean, look at the infrastructure they put in. That's where the big money gets. See the piping and rolling the stone, yeah. Alright, uh all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same. Alright. Discussion impossible action for Ork's Construction Pay Appwell Project.
Uh so this will be the the monthly. Payment request from Portson. I'm working on the wellhouses and the new well. Uh this is for line number eight is what being proposed tonight. One hundred sixty six thousand three hundred twelve dollars and seventy cents. Uh if you wade through the details, this is largely just reflective of some more capital buildings themselves. Uh which has been progressing. Uh the cold obviously enhancing back there. We do expect. Roof trusses to be installed over this next three to four weeks. So they'll. Starting to look like a building. Uh gonna start to see things slow down quite a bit though until it can. Gets more manageable temperatures. This may be, well, yeah, this may be the last for a couple of months. So other than that, things are going well and on schedule. We would recommend approval payment three for that uh. One hundred sixty six thousand three twelve and seventy cents.
Do I have a motion, please? I motion to approve payment to Portson of one hundred sixty six thousand three hundred twelve dollars and seventy cents. One second. Alright, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, same. So move. Thanks, Brian. I appreciate it.
Anything else?
No, I think the the rest of this we'll be able to handle, but thank you.
Merry Christmas?
Yeah, you too. So uh next one is discussion and possible action, retirement benefit cost accounting process. This is um. Part of the budget that we put in for the retirement, because we have a number of people retiring at a fairly. High dollar amount. So this is a. Policy that's pro- proposed to try to help with managing uh that cost. And the main thing it'll do is hopefully um. It'll potentially help uh. Keep us, uh we're not gonna double hit the levy. And what I mean by that, if you have three, we think three employees are retiring. Let's say it's seventy five thousand, but on, and so we budget seventy five thousand, but only two retire. That means there's twenty five thousand that we've already budgeted for employee C. That would just be moved into uh at the end of the year when they. Pull everything off what uh of accounts, it would go into the fund balance as a restricted. So come fall again, the money for employee C would still be there. And we wouldn't be rebudgeting that. Let's say it was another. Three people we thought were retiring at seventy five thousand, we'd only have to budget fifty instead of seventy five thousand. So it's an I, it's basically taking the money that we budgeted once. Restricting it and using it when the person retires. That's pretty much the bottom line to that.
So we just made a motion.
Yep.
Um I make a motion that we accept the retirement benefit cost accounting policy.
Sure.
Do I have a second? I'll start. Alright, discussion. Cameron?
Uh I I guess how did we come to this policy? Was it something Bobby wrote? We wrote?
Um I I I wrote it. Uh I did it because um as you know, I'm. Concerned with us getting close to the levy limit, so I'm trying to come up with ways to give us some. Some cushion there and not butt up against it. Yeah, yes, okay. Ah, okay, Dad, let's do that. I wrote the first draft. She made it much nicer.
There's like a grammatical error in it. Should I have to point it up?
Sure.
In the background, it says the second sentence, they are also eligible to covert instead of convert accretively.
Very good.
It wasn't test, too bad.
The other night when I was going through this, I knew it was like. What are we doing covert?
Yeah. Thank you. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, I think so. Just another question. Bobby, you have any concerns with this policy?
No.
Alrighty, uh did we get a motion already? We're at discussion, right? Okay, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same. Alright, number six, uh discussion and possible action, village management team budget adjustment plans. Um this is uh probably the third time we've had this year, if you remember. Uh the memo, the budget memo this year asked for people. Um department has to come up with ways of cutting costs, being more efficient or bringing in revenue. Uh they came in with that. I looked at all of them. We came up with this summary. You were all given nice. I don't remember if it was at the last meeting or the meet meeting before you got all the memos from department heads and this summary. We then went through and tried to figure out where. It should land. So tonight, um I was hoping everybody looked at the ones that said village board. And maybe one of you would have an interest in being lead on it. Otherwise, we'll bring them back. You know, one or two at a meeting just uh to work through. Thoughts, Cody?
The eliminating the insert with the tax bills. Consider refresh me with.
That's when you got your tax bill, it showed how it was broken down. So if we did not put that in the tax bills, there'd be. A hundred dollars saved.
Could we print it on the back? They do think it's.
No, I I think it's important to.
That's when we're, I wouldn't want to see that when you go.
I don't wanna go through them and discuss them now. I'm just wondering if someone, if people have an interest in any of them that say. Village board on it. Otherwise, we'll do it as a group and I'll bring that back, of course, and then we have the discussion and decide. Or if you think there's one on there that you thought we should look at. Besides the other groups. Uh that's fine, but just remember, this is just the starting point. A lot of these will come back. To the board. Once the committees and stuff look at them like, the public safety is gonna look at uh. The fee scale, you know, for for fines. They're gonna bring that back to us because we all have final say. But this is just where things. Start, get the groundwork done, build the the data and stuff like that. Cameron?
When did the village economic development committee go away? I guess I don't even think.
That has been, it's. Yeah, it's it's been very spotty. It's been on a needs basis generally. Um isn't, and maybe.
I was on it the last time. It was Jim Nana and Mike Ressler on that penis. Um I don't know. I I feel like we didn't get anything done worse. Matt was here at the time.
Wasn't it around the Blue Street thing?
I was on it in the mid nineties when we were looking at. Uh the office park and business park and then sunny industry. So it's kind of been, I hope.
Okay, cause then, look, cause. E- economic development is like part of Brian's title, right?
You know.
Uh would we like? Remove that from his title?
He would be the staff person. He would be a staff person. It's just would be bringing people in, you know, business peo- just kind of like. I I'm almost, yeah, I mean, that. That's kind of close, cause I know the the one in Madison, he, you you heard, they went into housing. But the one in Madison even expands into business development, like they'll get their, they're getting their hands into the um. Market. The whatever that market they're putting down on First Street, public market.
Yeah.
You know. So I mean, that would be something that. You could kind of look at, but I think it was just thrown out there. Is that something we wanna look at?
And I would think like if you do more with um the chamber, I mean, as far as trying to bring in businesses and things like that, I think they can even help you.
But again, I, tonight, I just want, if you have an interest in that, then you can do kind of a paper on the pros and cons of it. You, what I'm saying, I don't wanna go through them right now and discuss, because we have nothing really to discuss. It's it's, I guess I'm looking at, do you agree with the ones that are assigned to village board? Are there any that are not assigned to village board that you think it should be? And if you have a certain interest in bringing some material together to be lead on it, that's fine. I don't wanna spend a whole lot of time tonight doing that. It's just a matter of you looking over this. And having some ideas, because I don't want any surprises or people saying, well, I think I would have liked to have done that versus. The finance committee. Cameron?
What is a transportation utility?
That is, you'll be getting uh, what do we have it on January's uh? No, it, there's a difference. We're gonna be bringing, but we did real tax. I don't wanna get into it because it's complicated. And Deb has a very nice PowerPoint that she's gonna bring to one of our board meetings.
Okay.
And that's, it's on the finance, so.
Okay.
And I don't remember if we have it on January's meeting or February. Do you remember what we said when we met last time? Michael, do you remember?
I think she was gonna present. I don't know if she was gonna bring it to the January finance and then we're gonna.
Oh, that's right. Maybe that's it.
Bringing it to the finance person, we haven't really seen it yet or.
Yeah, we've seen that.
There's a while.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, she was gonna refresh us, I think, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I guess I just don't know how, I mean, that says the finance committee or the village board. I don't, I don't know what it is. I don't know how to. You know, evaluate that line item, but it's only one line item.
Well, I think that's going there first and then it's coming to the village board. Cause we could not, the finance committee isn't gonna make that call.
Right, but you you had just said, what I'm looking for is, like, you guys look over this, is that the right spot? And I'm saying, I don't have enough information to weigh it in.
Oh, right.
Okay, gotcha.
Some of the finance committee have done research into one of the transportation utilities, so that everything will be presented here at some point.
Okay, I'll just pretend that one doesn't make it.
Okay.
Um otherwise, I I think I did look at this. I think it looks fine. Um and if you're looking for. Uh you know, I have some in- interest slash expertise in the tech might text might go, certain things, so I can.
Okay.
Can do some digging into that.
Alright. Yes, that would be great. Alright, otherwise, we, these will be coming back at some point. Alright, let's move on then. Number seven, discussion and possible action, village chronic nuisance ordinance. Chief.
Um so that uh we received a complaint, um we've received a couple of them. Um that ordinance um has been discussed now. Um and finally, we we were able to get our village attorney involved and that's the ordinance that he came up with. So in a nutshell, that gives authority to deal with. Locations where. It's a habitual nuisance location. Where if you read through it, you know, after three violations, then we start. The not a fine, it's more of a fee. Uh to the landowner or the. The the homeowner or the 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 person, the management. That's in charge of that place, so they can rectify it. Um. I think uh our village attorney looked at. Different models and this is what he thought would work the best. Um it's almost, it's to a fate, a fate nuisance. And it is an extensive process. It's not. Simple by any means. It would have been a lot easier to have just citations issued to a landlord. But it doesn't have the same. Layer and 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 this is something for severe. Severe issues, not not what we're dealing with on a day to day. Um this specific place, um we have had. Forty plus calls there just in my time here. Um we've made multiple arrests there. Um we've used. Thousands of dollars in resources. It's it's just out of control. There's a lot of issues there. Um. I have had numerous conversations. Um with the tenants and also I've had some conversations with the. Uh homeowner and not much has moved forward. We continue to get violations, although right now it's a little. It's been lax.
It's the best practice, really, um and tries to do chief polling and staff. Please staff some team.
Cody?
So this basically gives you recourse more so. To take the two of that to other.
You know, it's, it's not the traditional, I mean, Jake could probably talk a little more about it, but it's not the traditional way of handling that. This is more. Like a abating a nuisance, so it's not a, you know, we're used to kind of issuing the ticket, having to go through the municipal board. And then, you know, the, that's what it normally goes. This, this is completely different.
With this really, and we use it in Madison quite a bit. I've taken hotels using something like this. It's basically when the landlord isn't doing what they're supposed to be doing to controlling the, the tenants. We, you know, we can write as many citations. So the end game to this, and it's a lot of. Whoops to jump to. The end game is the village would actually take over the property. That's where the power comes in, that someone loses their property. At, at, you know, if they don't correct the, the nuisance, so. Like I say, it's, it rarely gets used, usually the, the first step is you meet with them and tell them, lay this out. And usually that corrects it because they don't want to lose their investment. You know, so that's, that's the real tea, but I mean, when you go there, you're talking about takes years to do that because you gotta go through the courts and stuff.
Does also establish that the, that you can start.
Right.
Writing citations to the person.
Correct.
And the fees are expensive. It's, I mean, five hundred dollars for first, that's thousand dollars. And those things start to add up when, you know, rent, you're basically taking the rent and paying the fee. Um, you know, that sort of thing.
Judy?
Yeah, if I understand it correctly, it's after three offenses in a year and twelve months.
Yeah.
So if they had more than three in twelve months, that's when we start doing it and we send it to the owner of the property, not the manager, the five hundred, the thousand.
Yeah, because the, the renter is already receiving the normal violations, whatever we're proving, right? Whether disorderly conduct or some type of nuisance already covered by ordinance. It just cleans things up so we can actually have some teeth with the, with the land.
How, how, how many times do we have to do it before we could take it over? Like you said, we can own the property.
From our, from the city of Madison, it's at least three. Three major steps and you, the last step, you clearly get the city attorney involved in it. But like I say, they rarely get to that. You negotiate something generally on that.
Um, reality, we don't want it to get to that.
Well, they, we don't, or they sell the property.
Yeah.
Then it, 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 it starts all over again when in sale. And obviously if you get people with selling of drugs. Then the process is really streamlined. I mean, it's very, very short if, if, if there's. Get them for, uh, intend to deliver or manufacture.
Is that close enough to a location like school?
It's close.
It's just, I'm just outside and.
I maybe cut through.
Well, don't make me quite make a motion yet, because I, the one part of this that, and I'm, I know you might not be able to answer, but it's a little confusing. This section, sub ye appeal, and it basically says that. Uh, provision is that the appeal process, which is one of the first ones, is to be submitted to the public safety committee.
Yeah.
Which is okay, but then the next line says Wisconsin state statute sixty eight shall not apply. To such an appeal, but that is the statute that gives the public safety committee the power to take the appeal. And I'm not sure.
I think though the wording is off.
Yeah.
It just, it makes sense that there would be a place obviously to appeal.
Right, and that's.
Whole public safety would, would be the committee to do that. I don't know, you guys want to just, I, yeah, I saw.
I, I think, I think we gotta check with Paul because chapter sixty eight is when a citizen feels the government has done something. Um, you know, not right, that's your appeal process and it lays things out. So that one can kind of confuse me and I'm not sure why that's there.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure.
I don't think you can get rid of state statute in an ordinance, but I, 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 that's the only thing that I saw that.
Well, I, I think you, you can, you can make it more restrictive. That's what he was trying to tell us, but the wording is, is.
Yeah, we gotta check. I just want to make sure we check on that because that doesn't seem right to me. Something's missing.
Well, if we have to go back to Paul, I'm just anyway. That. Tony, are you, do you? I, I guess I haven't been a part of the process. I mean, I know. Public safety committee is, I guess, are you happy with this or are you?
That's desperately needed. We, we need to do something that. These, so I'm just told you we have about forty to fifty links since two thousand twenty. Uh, but this dates back for, for a decade.
Right, so I know we need something. I guess all I'm asking is this, the something you're.
I work, I'm, I'm, you know, I just think that. If we could clean that up and I don't know if it, would it have to come back here again next month?
That's when you're gonna make a motion, that as is except for, you know, C.
Or do you have to say C?
That's E, the first.
Oh, E, yeah, that's an E, sorry.
Alright, there's also another thing in here that might have to be cleaned up. If you go into. A, B, the nuisance activities thing and you go down to N. Talks about all those things or conducted enumerated in subsections one through fourteen of this section. The sections are letters, not numbers. I don't know what one through fourteen.
Oh, yeah.
It should be A through M or A through N or whatever you ever just tried to do there, but those numbers don't need.
Well, unless they're talking about one through fourteen of state statute nine thirty three, nine thirty nine point three two.
That's what, that's what I.
Is that what that's saying?
And I didn't look that one up, so I don't know what that one is, to be honest with you.
I mean, there's a lot of, it's, it's very complex.
But it says sections one through fourteen of this section. So this section makes me think of this section.
Yeah, but it's, but it's.
No, maybe just like some nine three, nine thirty one or nine thirty.
Well, none of us are lawyers.
No.
We should, we should have Paul look at it, um, and maybe. I mean, you, you're wanting this to, you don't want.
Hey, there's not much.
I, I, I think that they're, and we're still enforcing the law there. This is just. I, I think we need to do it right. I mean, we're gonna do it, I might as well do it.
I.
So maybe we could just simply send this back to Paul with those two things and bring it back to the board.
I think that's fine with, I, I agree with that and, you know, the committee, Paul is good to work with and try to take a best practice. I think it was somewhere on Green Bay and gave us what we wanted with some teeth and. I think overall it's gonna sort of surface, but we might as well clean out those two areas.
Yeah. But to, can we just speed it up? Can we just? Um, Brian, could you just send it back to him with those two things?
Yeah, can, um. Uh, Michael, can you just state again, what was the one section, the language, uh, section?
And.
And, okay.
So, so.
Eight, three, and.
Yeah, okay.
The subsections one through fourteen of this section.
To me, it means that they're looking back at the state law portion of it, but.
That's what I think so too. But I didn't look that up to see if there's one through fourteen sections on there.
But I think directionally, obviously, if the committee was on board, so if I can get cleaned up, it just come back to the board.
Yeah, no, I agree, yeah.
Okay.
Alright, very good.
And then you got, you got the other one, Brian?
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, uh, chief, the next one is discussion and possible action, uh, village red flag program.
So this came to the public safety committee, I mean, received multiple, I mean, we've received multiple complaints with regards to. Uh, traffic all the time, uh, with kids blocking more and, and, um, a lot of traffic. Driving to the schools, that's where this kind of generated. So some parents asked us to take a look at the red flag program. You, you guys had a red flag program at some point. They were all over town and. Um, and talking to Jerry historically, it just kind of one thing broke and then it kind of came off. Came off the pole and nobody replaced it and it just kept going until they were all gone. Um, so the, the red flag program is, it's. It's a, it's a safety initiative. That's what they look like. Um, my understanding and talking to Jerry is we supply the flags, which I can use. Uh, that grant funding for public safety funding that's still available to cover the cost of the flags. And then they put together the, the cylinders that, that, and they're probably laying around somewhere at the shop already, so. Uh, we've only chosen four locations. The committee did their due diligence to kind of, I mean, to have them everywhere. It almost loses its, uh, luster for it, so they picked four really good locations and, um. It's not a pilot program. We want it, you know, to be in place and, and maintain it because we know that over a course of time. Kids are gonna swipe a flag here and there and, and they're just gonna come up missing. Um, so we'll have to replenish, replenish them, but it's, it's a good program and, and. There are locations where people would love to have the extra flashing lights, but. But DOT and, and it's, it's only the ones that are there are the only ones that are allowed. I looked into that too. Apparently you guys dealt with that during the main street project, so. For me, it's probably extra work that I didn't need to do, but. I just wanted to understand why you couldn't, you know, look for grant funding for some more lights and stuff. Um, so, that's it.
Julie?
Can we put like reflectors on them?
Yeah.
So it's not just a reflect.
They, they make them a little, even a little more expensive. You can buy some. I just give you there's a bag, okay?
No, I get it. Just because at night is the time that they can't see them all, so I'd like something more.
We can have a better reflective one.
Cameron?
What is the red flag program? Like I see the picture of red flags, don't know anything.
Luckily, there's a cylinder with red flags on each side of the.
Pretty well, because sometimes.
And that way people know you're trying to.
Yeah, particularly with the orange or the path light, but I think they kind of went away. When we did the highway board project and some of those, but our citizens are asking for another way. Raise visibility.
I don't think, because I stopped already thinking people went across, but to hear they're waiting for the bus.
Right.
So they're like, no, keep going.
No, no, they, they're, they're like.
I'd be like, okay.
Well, more.
They're, they're used in all, in all kinds of. They've always had them all over. There's a lot of examples of.
I can hear the shoebox.
Yeah, there you go, yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're, it's a good program.
Alright, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
So who else is presenting?
Red flag, red flag.
The red flag.
You were gonna say red flag.
Alright, so I, alright, so I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same? So moved, alright. So, uh, number nine, discussion and possible action, renewal of the school resource officer program agreement between the village of Cross Plains. And the Middleton Cross Plains School District.
Yeah, that, I mean, uh. Uh, Bill, Jay and myself worked on that pretty extensively last year and cleaned it up nicely, so. There wasn't anything we needed to change. Um, the school district is gonna take it up and, and approve it here shortly. We wanted to get the first dibs at it, which is the problem is that should be taken, we should, we should look at it before they approve it. So we, um, we did look at it again. I don't, there was no, no, besides the year changes, there's nothing. That needed to be changed. Um, I also spent some time talking to, to, uh, Officer Cypher about that and everything's working out well and. Um, also talked to administration at, at multiple schools. Uh, because he also goes to the Peter schools and he's doing a, a really good job of the program as a six hours.
Alright, can I have a motion?
A motion to approve is presented.
Do I have a second? I'm sorry. So I have a motion and a second to approve the SRO, uh, agreement between the village of Cross Plains and the Milton's Cross Plain School District. Discussion, Cameron, probably, maybe even we need to put in motion that we're gonna change the dates, assuming we're not changing anything else, I think. Well, I thought, is it, did, did we have the dates changed at all?
They did not.
Uh.
So, yeah, so, I mean, it looks like the one we just signed last year. If you want to, there's no changes, but I think it's fine. I just, I don't know if we need to save on that.
Yeah, I mean, but that is not, the contract is, is. One that's presented doesn't have the changes. But yes, the. So I guess can we, uh, have an amendment, uh, put in that with the changes of updating that, uh, the current twenty twenty two. Twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four.
Yes, that's fine. I'll, I'll learn my own, I can. Do I need your deal signed?
Huh?
Second, okay.
Yeah. Alright.
No, it was Cody and.
Yeah, Cody, yeah, oh.
That's what I said, Ryan, if you.
Well, he's making amendment, uh, so I need a second to his. No, 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 no. Oh, you did your Doug's too?
So sorry.
No.
Wait, he's making amendment to his motion to put in the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four. Year.
And she seconded that.
Oh.
I did, I did call you.
Yeah, I did.
No, you just seconded it on the.
Okay. So any discussion on Doug's amendment? All in favor, say aye. Uh, okay, so now the current one that Cody and Judy have, has now been changed to include the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four. Time period of the contract. Alright, any discussion on that one? All in favor, say aye. Aye, aye, all opposed, same, so moved, thank you.
The only comment I'll make is, you know, obviously this is both school board, they may, they may. Make, want some changes and then they would have to come back here.
Correct.
But. I, I didn't have.
Yeah. Alright, very good. So then discussion and possible action hazardous, uh, mitigation grant, uh, Wisconsin emergency ma-. Management, Brian?
Okay, um, over the last couple of meetings, I had mentioned to you that I had been in conversations with the CARPSY organization. And Mike Rupeper, um, talking about a couple of green infrastructure, um, improvement, um, opportunities throughout the village. Um, one such parcel that, uh, we kind of went back and, and discussed was the thirteen point two acre site. Um, outside of the Creek Crossing subdivision that the village owns. Um, now in twenty twenty, uh, at the January meeting, um, Bill had worked, uh, with CARPSY. And they put together a preliminary proposal for federal grant assistance. Um, dedicating that parcel along with a couple of other, uh, adjacent parcels as a potential site for some. Flood mitigation upgrades, uh, for the village. Um. The grant itself, uh, they were not successful in obtaining. Um, but that did not diminish the village's interest in potentially pursuing future grants. Um, Mike had mentioned that the Wisconsin Emergency Management, um. Uh, might have a program available right now that, uh, we could utilize for. Um, continuing to pursue that upgrade of and on that site. Um, they have since responded stating that yes, in fact, they do have some remaining grant money for twenty twenty two. Um, and in time is of the essence, if we are interested in pursuing that, we would need to. Um, have village board approval, uh, sought, um. And I've kind of outlined a little bit about the specifics related to the, the, the financial implications of pursuing such a grants. But it's a, it's a pretty solid, um, opportunity. The, the grant's gonna potentially cover ninety percent of the. Um, the construction costs and engineering costs related to this. The village would be responsible for the other ten percent. Um, fortunately, that was not known at the time we were doing the budget, so that ten percent isn't currently set aside for next year, but. Um, given the fact that this is a very high. Amount of financial, um, support for this project, um, funded entirely through grants, I thought it was worth bringing to the board's attention. And, uh, it also is an alignment we'll let the village sought to pursue in twenty twenty.
Right, this is the property that we currently lease out to.
Part of it.
Okay, and then would that limit? Our abilities to do that and then kind of like. That piece of property was actually brought up as a potential site and just brainstorming for a dog park.
Well, that site that, that, that site has always been kind of dedicated for, um, flood mitigation.
Right.
Now, within, that's gotta be the priority. Now, within that, if we can use it for a dog park or something when it's not holding water, that's something, but. Um, it's gotta be, to me, the, the priority has to be, because if we don't do it there, then. We're saying we're not doing anything to the northeast because that's the watershed.
Right.
But it, like I say, anything's possible. Uh, but right now, that land is, was purchased and the thought was. And we tried to get a huge grant to go all the way up that valley for flood mitigation.
Okay. And there's some hiring, I mean, there might be a spot.
Yeah, I, I was just curious.
Yeah.
Oh, I should get that back. My question is, Jules, we did a lot of the stuff for that. Would that count towards our ten percent if we hand down basically the engineering and everything that we already did?
I don't know the answer to that definitively, but what I can tell you is that Mike has one of the engineers from. I don't know if it's Jewel or EOR, working on coming up with a, a specific to our. I don't know if it's Jewel or E O R, working on coming up with a, a specific to our parcel only. Uh, modification design right now. Um, so I doubt that that would be the case. I know that that is what they are utilizing as the model by which to formulate this new design.
Michael, so yeah, that was my question, what is the design? That hasn't been determined, that's what you say they're working on or trying to resolve. I think inside that Jewel study that we came up with, it had a few different options. For that land, one involved building a dam even, one involved retention, things like they gave. Two or three different ways to use that land and they all had different price points, that's why I was trying to figure out. What the project is and how you estimated it at two hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah, so I don't have the specifics, like I said, the engineer's working on that, he was scrambling to try to put something together. I asked Mike Ruhpiper if he was gonna be able to attend tonight, and he was not able to, uh, due to a prior commitment, but. I did ask him, do you have some example of what this modified version of this proposal might look like? He said, this is the essential first, first draft of what was done in twenty twenty involving this site, so it would be. Similar in nature, and I think what it is, is it's gonna create pooling areas so that in a, a creek overflow situation. The water can be absorbed into certain spots. I can't definitively say the dam is a part or isn't.
And that was if we were looking to go all the way up to Enchanted Valley.
Okay.
So it was, they're all the way, all through Ziegler's Farm and stuff, and you have red, if I remember, was gonna be a big firm. To hold it, and then on the other side, you have the hillside where the homes are, so there was just gonna be this big. Far as you can see, gonna hold the water, to slowly let it drain out versus going up over the road, and that's when we have the flooding.
Okay, so, and is that teal line on there, is that like the creek being meandered?
That is correct, let me just scroll down.
That was part of the plan.
I, I think so, I haven't looked at that proposal in two and a half years, but. Cause there was talk also at the time of those areas, putting wetlands in there, birds, a trail. Walking trail through there so that it has dual use. Dog park could possibly be thrown in somewhere if it's not too soggy in there.
But, but we're just right now talking about the yellow triangle.
Oh, that's all this is.
Yeah, this is, yeah, this is the twenty twenty expanded version project, which is not happening and did not. Correct, this is, this is.
That's all we own.
Yeah.
Oh, man, yeah, you're right, okay, God.
This is all I could find for like a visual.
That was the master, but that was the five million dollar plan.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Right. Yeah, yeah, we, we, there's a couple land.
All right, we'll hold a few drops of water back.
It's still a big site.
If they were digging out and making a giant retention pond, then we'd have some purpose, but still, with the, with the limited space, I'm just curious what they would do. With just that slice of the pie.
The, there was talking another plan of like going in there and like stripping soil, like moving and stuff all around, like.
Well, like, i- 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 is it a catch-all, is it gonna solve the flooding? No, but I can tell you, it would have. You get a five, like the, the twenty eighteen, no, even that whole plan, who knows? Because we never were gonna change the color, if you remember.
Right.
But this would, a hundred year one, may have an impact downstream.
It'll keep the, it'll keep the younger yard from going underwater, because all that water is sitting up here around.
Right, and it'll take slower, you know, so I, I, I think, you know, my, my, well, my feeling is we're doing something. Right now, we're not doing anything, and this is something where, you're right, we pay ten percent, um. It, it's, 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 it's something that I think, to me, ten percent on what we're getting to show that we are serious, I think it's a, a, a good move. And I don't know what the end result is gonna look like, and then if we can do dual, where we can put a dog park in there, because now it's nice and flat. And, you know. Yeah, no, no, and I, and I brought that thought up too, put it up, we wouldn't be able to do a blacktop thing, but a, a gravel parking lot or something? It, we might, but we just don't know, but the priority has to be flood mitigation.
I'm, I'm just curious and thinking, obviously, nothing would happen tomorrow with it, but would that have anything to do with our lease with Ziegler's?
Well, that's done right now. Yeah, so he'll be coming back in April, may ask you to redo it, and then we just, we'll hopefully know one way or the other if we can do it or not. And it's a hundred bucks an acre, and I think, what, five?
Wh- when do you think there, what's the, what's the process here? Like, if we, we approve this, then they're just gonna go and design something. And that's gonna be what's submitted, or is the design gonna come back to us? Because we approve it, like you're just gonna run with it, because it's so close to the deadline, it's like.
I think that's pretty much a, you know, how it's gonna play out, and it's not gonna be able to be brought back. I mean, even if we pull the special meeting together, I think it needs to be submitted, like ASAP, yeah, it's, it's fast. Cause it's twenty twenty-two remaining obligated funds from the WEM. Uh, set aside for this, yeah.
You can always put the plan together, apply for the grant, and then if you get the grant, you can always say you don't want the money, if you don't like.
Right, yeah, we don't have to take the money, not. If it's all screwed.
We know where we get the twenty-three thousand, so we probably throw it in with the one point two million we're gonna borrow anyways, and maybe if. We end up doing something with the library and, you know, we decide to do that ourselves. We could have extra money there, because according to Brian, we have sixty-three thousand, but. He thinks the cost of fixing the library what's left is about fifteen thousand.
And what about the thirteen thousand we're saving from storing their rates?
Well, that, there's another.
Yeah, has it actually worked out like that? I guess Bobby, do you have any concerns with, you know, twenty-three thousand or where we're gonna budget or?
Yeah, let's see if it'll just be added to the borrowing or pull from capital fund, fund my own.
Other people's feelings. All right, can I have a motion then?
With that, I motion to approve the hazard mitigation grant for the Wisconsin Emergency Management.
I'll second it.
All right, I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All hold same, right. Rule eleven, discussion impossible action glacier edge square W E B C vibrant spaces grant. Resolution, that's a awful.
Okay, this, um, was an opportunity that the W E D C had notified municipalities of. Um, being new for twenty twenty-three. Um, it was targeted, uh, as a grant program to revitalize underutilized spaces. Um, for the benefit of communities and, uh, the business community and respective municipalities. Um, the village, the, the reason I thought that this might be a viable spot, obviously, the glaciers edge square mall. Uh, park, um, did not ever have realized design plans, uh, come to fruition. Um, and it was also a site that we were in the process of obligating funding in twenty twenty-three towards addressing. Um, through some modifications, so the village's portion of the match, uh, to qualify for this grant would be met. Um, and we have those funds obligated for this, um, again, that is going to be. Um, converted space into an outdoor or an asphalt, um, pavement base for outdoor. Um, commercial, uh, seasonal display items, um, for the businesses, um, Ace Hardware in particular. And then some converted additional parking space for that corridor, um, in the, uh, that section of the mall. Um, I have been in contact with, uh, uh, the development team, um, All-Star Properties about their. Uh, uh, interest in, in being a part of this and having us pursue this grant. Uh, they thought that it was going to be a very beneficial endeavor for us to seek out. I have, uh, received a, a letter of support from them, which I included in the packet, I received that late last week. Um, the concept plan that was included in the packet, this came from, and what was referenced is part of the M O U that was agreed upon with Neiman Foods. Um, who is Ace Hardware, uh, as part of that agreement, uh, for them coming into the village. Um, so this sort of outlines how the, the park conversion was gonna be taken. Um, uh, into effect related to the parking lot. Um, and then the concept shows some of the additions of picnic tables, benches, some outdoor. Uh, amenities and some additional landscaping, which ideally that money for the, the grant would assist in covering in full.
I can make a motion.
Sure.
To approve W E D C vibrant space grant, vibrant grant.
Do I have a second? All right, we have a motion and a second discussion. Cameron?
Brian, where did you say this drawing came from? Cause, well, I know planning committee, we talked about, you know, God, it was a long time ago, but we talked about that part. And there was a different drawing, so I'm just, you know.
Yes, there's been, okay, so this main one, take away the yellow square, but this main one came is probably ten years old. This was the whole redevelopment of Glacier Square, you can see where our building is, is redeveloped, where the car dealership is. That liquor store, so, but this was a nice map to start with. So then what we did is there were multiple ones that we, originally you came out, you see where the, yep, the red is. That's owned by, uh, Ace. So we wanted to do that, and then the other stuff that's outside the yellow is, belongs to the grocery store. So you saw a plan that was a larger area, but the Lancaster's didn't want to lose some parking of their. They didn't wanna be part of it, basically. Um, so then we brought it in, and Ace didn't really have a lot of money at the time, so then what we did is we just developed something. In just the yellow, because we control that, we don't have to go, well, technically, we'd still have to go through the neighborhood of, uh. The condo association, but they haven't been following things, so the yellow is what we're talking about right now.
Okay.
Now, my thought is, in the agreement with Ace, we agreed to do the parking lot part, so that was an M O U. So to me, we've already said we're gonna spend the money. Spend the money, so now we can use that as a match to help on the part that we are responsible. I, I think th- this is a great deal for us. Cause it's not gonna be any more money on our side, and we're probably gonna get more money to do nicer things than what we were planning to do.
Yeah, no, I, I don't.
So that's just kind of history, but you're right, there's been a lot of throwing through all of the time.
I just, I didn't think it was a bad idea, I was just like.
Yeah, no, I understand.
I was like, planning committee talked about something, but it wasn't this, so.
No, you're correct, you're absolutely correct on that. Michael?
When you said this was ten years old, this I think was a drink in two thousand and eighteen, because Caitlin was the administrator, I was on the board. This was, uh.
Well, it can't be eighteen, Bill was here three years, Brian's been almost a year, so it's at least four years, right?
Well, no, eighteen, two thousand and eighteen.
Oh, oh.
Cause the new quick trip's on there, this was done, Caitlin left in December two thousand and eighteen.
Oh, gotcha.
So, this was sometime, because she was here and this was, uh. Some plan that we had gotten a grant to write a plan for this area, and this was approved so that we would get the grant money. This was, this plan was put together under a grant program. Yeah, it was something like, we, like, we had to approve this plan, because we didn't, we wanna get the grant money, like the board had. Give us the money to pay for it, so.
And is that basically what we're doing again now? Just a different grant is up and they need us to say like, this is the plan we wanna do. And we wanna apply for the grant and then. Yeah, part of the application materials, I'm gonna need to show them a concept plan of what we envisioned doing with the space. Um, and then as well as show them proof that we have funding approved and obligated, the, the tenants of the program is that the. For the grant, uh, require that the project and all the corresponding, um, uh, development. It all needs to be spent and updated and finished in twenty twenty-three, of which we know. The portion of the pavement conversion will be done, uh, in twenty twenty-three. Um, and I can easily get quotes for the, the, you know, corresponding picnic table upgrades, a grill, you know. Trash receptacles and some landscaping, I have a meeting with the Bruce company next week to talk about landscaping, so I'm gonna get all the quotes put together. Um, if they need all those requirements, we'll have something to show our side of it. Now, the caveat with this is, is it's a new program, but it's gonna be very highly competitive. I, I've already heard there's a, a lot of applications that they've already received for it. But I still think when we already have the money obligated to do it, it's in our best interest to give it a shot.
And, and when does this grant need to be in by?
I need to get all materials submitted, uh, by the end of January. I've got a couple things that, very tight timelines that I'm in correspondence with a lot of people on right now.
All right.
Well, we could give it a go, see if we get it.
No, we've already got the money committed. All right, I had a motion and, uh, second, uh, all in favor, say aye. All hold same, all right. Well, no, no, we got future, right, someone wanted this back, we've been leaving it out, any future agenda items you'd like put up? I brought that, if there's nothing, that's fine, you can always let me know later, but I said I would do that, all right. Now we're at a jun- jun- minute. All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all hold same, thank you very much and go the pack, we've only probably missed the first five minutes of it.
Unacceptable.